Can we have roll call?
Bonnie Mc and Ernie Slater.
Here.
Deborah Addy, here. Dennis Schmansky.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey, absent. Joe Bozzi.
Here.
Samantha Bynum.
Here.
Brian Truppa, absent.
All right, we do have a quorum. We have five members present. Can I get a motion to approve or any amendments to the agenda?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any changes to the minutes? If not, I'll take a motion for approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I'm going to read the zoning board of appeals preface. The Clay Township Zoning Board of Appeals primarily addresses practical difficulty based on lot size, location, shape, or contour and/or location of existing buildings. We are guided by section 27.05 of ordinance number 126. There are five members on the ZBA. Three members constitute a quorum. Each appeal before the ZBA will first have a public hearing, at which time the applicant will present his or her case. Then, any public comment regarding that issue will follow. During this time, members of the board may ask questions of clarification. If a particular point gets belabored, the chairperson has the right to limit comment. When the public hearing is closed, the board will move into deliberation phase of the particular request before us. If the applicant should disagree with the board's decision, he or she has the right to take it to circuit court within 30 days of the decision. When your appeal hearing is concluded, you are welcome to stay or leave as you wish. So, I believe our first case up is JB, JZBA 2022-0159287 North River Road. Are the applicants here for that?
Yes.
Can we come up? Please come up and explain to us what you'd like to do.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Lisco. I'm actually with Discount Fence Company, and I am here looking to just replace an existing fence. It's basically an existing fence that is just in disrepair. It's a privacy fence that sits in between condos at 9287 and the property to the south of it. All of the condos actually face north and the back of them face south. None, they don't face the River Road. So, it's a privacy fence blocking their backyards from existing yards beyond them. And basically, really, all we're looking to do is take down a fence that's in disarray and replace in disrepair, I'm sorry, and replace it in the exact same spot.
Okay. Would it be a wooden six-foot fence?
Yes, it's a six-foot wooden privacy fence. That's what exists there, and that's exactly what it would be replaced with.
Okay. Do any of the board members have any questions while she's here? Uh, no. Okay. If you'd like to have a seat for a moment, we will open it up to public comment. Does anyone in the audience have any public comment with regard to this issue? Gary, was there anything you wanted to say?
He's got a letter in there if you want to leave that.
There was?
Yeah.
I saw the colony ones.
It's right behind it.
Yep. I'll read that one when Gary's done. Okay.
Okay, what can I help you with? What do you need explanation on? There is a dilapidated fence. And on the condo side of it, it is the backyards that it runs along. What we're asking, or what a variance is being asked for, is from the first building out to the roadway, which is considered the front yard. So, that area is where a variance would be required in order to put up a six-foot privacy fence.
Okay. Would this fence block any vision, traffic vision pulling out?
Well, that's why on the bottom of the memo that you've received, I did ask for the last 20 feet to be dropped down to a three-foot height so that we have that traffic clearance.
Okay. Thank you.
Basically.
Right, now I see it now. All right, we do have a letter here from Gary. There is a unique situation associated with this request that I wanted to make you aware of. Currently, there is a dilapidated six-foot privacy fence that was installed many years ago that extends the entire length of the property, front to back. Petitioner is requesting to replace the dilapidated fence with a new privacy fence. Our ordinance 126, section 3.08.1B, does not allow any sight obstructing fence in the front yard area. This property is an old individually-owned site condo development that consists of seven buildings. The buildings are situated in a way that the fence runs along the rear side of the buildings. The building, unit number 10, is the closest to the street. It is this unit that the front yard begins and extends to the street. This area, this is the area that requires the variance. Next to the property is a single-family home, 9305. I believe that the privacy fence would help shield this home from the backs of the buildings and light and the noise pollution associated with the 10 dwelling units and more than 10 vehicles that potentially shine their lights into the adjoining home's yard every time they enter into the property. Toward the front of the property, there is also a dumpster enclosure that is in the fence with. If you find a unique situation and approve this variance, I would only include that the front 20 feet must be stepped down to three feet high so that the fence does not cause sight obstruction for vehicles coming from both properties entering or exiting. Seeing no public comment, we will close public comment. Thoughts from the board?
I was actually looking at it today, and there are several places where the fence is falling in. It doesn't exist. People cross over between the two properties. And that step down, I wouldn't think would matter because it probably is about 100 feet before the first condo to the road. And that's a good sight because it's right before the state park over there. So, it's got a little bend in the road.
Right.
Would be a very good thing.
Yeah, I like Gary's recommendation for the thing. I mean, it is something that's been there for many years before the condos were even built. And the way that whole lot has developed, you know, it's, you know, funny, your backyard, those condos, those fences in their backyard, you know, so.
Yeah, that might be the unique situation over residential homes, right?
Yeah, because the way those homes are against it.
Basically, a multi-family.
Back of a house. Wasn't this ordinance still rewritten recently, or? It's always been like this before.
Yeah, I don't think this part was rewritten. Oh, I take it that they did revise it a little bit when it was for waterfront fences.
Right.
Water, water side, yeah. Yeah, I don't see any revision.
I would say that I do agree with cutting it back to the three feet and actually get closer to the road so that the vehicles, it doesn't cause an accident.
Well, I would make the motion that we grant this variance and do as recommended as Gary had pointed out, 20-foot setback. And the practical difficulty would be that, well, the fence was already there and the way that those lots or those condos are backed up, it would serve just when they're pulling out to their properties, they're not shining all over everybody else down the road. Kind of similar situation like over at Mowing Madness, you know?
Yes.
So, basically, multi-family next to a single-family.
Yeah.
I'll second your motion.
I think we need to go through all the steps.
Through all the steps, yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, a unique situation would be like, again, the buildings that are, the multi-use that is next to the R1, and which is not a common thing around here, you know? So, that's unique in itself. It's not self-created because the fence was there long before. Substantial justice, it would, again, would be helping the neighbor. There would, all those other neighbors are pulling out, won't be blinding them, but their lights and there'll be some sort of privacy window in your backyard, and they're looking in their backyard, you know, where that checked. And then, it's really not contrary to the ordinance. It's really not going to undermine the purpose of the zoning ordinances. We are making a stipulation of them lowering it, that's that last 20 feet versus what it is now, so.
Second?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Brian Truppa, absent. Deborah Addy, yes. Dennis Schmansky?
Yes.
Joe Bozzi?
Yes.
Samantha Bynum?
Yes.
Bynum, sorry.
No worries.
Bonnie Mc and Ernie Slater?
Yes.
I don't know if it would be helpful for you to write on these sheets.
Yes.
Did you get any of them?
They're in that envelope.
Oh, I have a ton.
Oh, she didn't. You got mail.
And then, we can just attach it to this.
That would be lovely.
That way, we can make sure that we cover all the bases.
Did you do this, Gary? Our new little checklist thing?
Did I do the checklist?
Yeah.
Cindy did.
I was saying, it's pretty good.
Just give her a moment to write it up.
So, I should fill this out instead of this?
Um, do the basics on that one.
Okay.
And then, I would say, fill out the other one in more detail.
Okay.
Kind of took some project notes.
Oh, thank you.
A little bit more work.
Yeah, that's okay.
I think in the long run, it will be better for us.
I think so.
We'll assist the neighbors with lighting, noise pollution.
Nope.
Just kind of chicken scratch.
Yeah, I mean, you see that, that's.
Very good. All right. And we will call the next case, which is JZBA 2022-0014, which is located at 8457 Colony Drive. They are seeking a variance with the height of the boathouse, a variance to allow for three boats, three boats versus two, and a second floor with an eight-foot ceiling height that is proposed. So, if the applicant is available and would like to come up and explain their request for a variance?
Hi, my name's Tom Prokoski, and I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. Lambert. They're the owners of the property. And we're basically asking for three different variances. There is a hardship here, basically, because the ordinances really don't allow for the proper use or the full use of the property that they have. Colony Drive is a very different situation than most properties. When you buy a piece of property there, you basically have a residential lot, and you have a lot that, back in 1920, was established for just garages, boathouses, and, you know, that type of usage. Well, the unique part about this particular lot is it has 100 feet of frontage on the canal. Most have 60. There are double lots and things like that. But this one here was purchased mainly because of the fact that it had the frontage. And the strange thing about it is, is when they bought it, they went up and down the colony, and there were, there's three or possibly four boathouses that already have three boat wells existing. So, when we did the plans and everything, it honestly never even was a thought. Also, we went through all of the proper steps, got Corps of Engineer approval, got Department of Natural Resources approval, got approval from the Colony Parks Association. There was a 30-day waiting period for objection by the state, and nobody objected to the permits. So, we do have permits and actually have built the boat wells already. Okay, which we had, you know, we had the permits to do that. The length with the property and the fact that there are already existing three-bolt well, boathouses, we feel should give us some consideration because we just want what everybody else can have. We're not asking for anything more. As far as the roof situation goes, which is another variance that we're asking for, it's about a three-foot area, but the roof is a hip roof. So, the peak of the roof basically consists, or is, part of that three-foot variance. It's only 3% of the whole total roof. And I've designed several boathouses down there, and I can guarantee you that we're lower than some of the other already-existing roofs. So, again, we're just asking to be consistent with what's going on, you know, further down the street. We don't want anything more. We just don't want anything less. And I guess, last but not least, we're a foot over for the deck space over the garage, which we were hoping to have for storage. It's not a living area, so we're asking for one foot in a wall height there so we could have a normal ceiling above the garage. There are several, again, facilities on the street and that have that presently. They actually have full eight-foot walls over the garage area. And again, we're just asking to be consistent with what's already there. And that should cover all three variances that we're looking for.
I have a question with respect to the Colony Park Association permit. You said you got the permit. We have the permit here. On the board comments, it said, "Must meet all height restrictions of Clay Township."
Yep, that's, that's correct, yeah. They also had in there about side yard setbacks, which we did supply them with all the information. The evening that they had the meeting, that particular documentation wasn't there. We supplied it to them the very, very next day, so.
All right. If you'd like to have a seat?
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone in the public have any comments for public comment? Seeing none, I do have a couple of letters to read. To Clay Township Zoning Board of Appeals, 8457 Colony Drive, the request for three variances should be denied. The ordinances should be held as stated in ordinance number 126. The four-foot variance should be denied. Boathouse should have a maximum of two boats, and a second floor shall not be permitted. We all have ordinances that we have to follow, and they are written for a reason. Please keep these variances intact as written. I live at 7317 Flamingo. Other than totally losing my view of the river, I am really concerned of the safety of the people with small boats using the canal next to the property. This is a real safety concern. Thank you, Mark and Sue Clark. To Clay Township Zoning Board of Appeals, 8457 Colony Drive, the request for three variances should be denied. The zoning ordinance should be held as stated in ordinance 126. The four-foot variance should be denied. Boathouses should hold a minimum of two boats, or a maximum of two boats. Second floor shall not be permitted. We all have written ordinances that we have to follow, and they are written for a reason. Keep these variances intact as written. I live at 7315 Flamingo. I purchased this house at the higher price because of the location and the view. I don't want to have a humongous boathouse blocking my view. They just built the house, and they wanted the boathouse offset so that they could still have a great view of the canal. I want to keep my view of the North Channel. A new boathouse so close to the canal, cut from the North Channel, is a safety hazard to boats. Using the cut, unable to see oncoming boats until the last minute while exiting the cut. Children play fish, swim, and play fish and swim in the area, and their safety concerns me. They're already using that area like a marina. Boats double parked on the canal. I am a dissatisfied resident. There was never a boathouse on this property, so they aren't grandfathered in. Why can they even put up a boathouse? We say no to the boathouse in any of the variances that they are requesting. Very concerned, new homeowner on Flamingo Drive, Jerry and Phyllis Paul Wesci. Last one. Dear zoning, or dear Clay Township Zoning Board of Appeals, we are writing to you regarding the request for three variances, or three variance requests by homeowner at 8457 Colony Drive. We have lived on Flamingo for 34 years. During that time, many homes and boathouses have been built, torn down, and rebuilt. With that being said, it's very obvious that the board has allowed a ridiculous amount of variances and now caused these beautiful canals to look like a city block. You go down the canals, and all you see are two-to-three-story boathouses that obstruct the view of several existing homes. Whoever is approving these should be ashamed, and we're allowing these variances. This nonsense needs to stop. Why aren't we following the existing ordinances? Enough is enough. What happened to respecting your neighbor's property? It's one thing if a homeowner who has lived there wants to upgrade their home, boathouse, within the existing ordinances, but we shouldn't allow new property owners to come here, build homes and boathouses so large that they barely fit the property. This letter isn't being written to cause grief to anyone, but it's the first time we've received a letter asking if we have a problem with the variance request. Because this boathouse will obstruct the view that we've enjoyed for 34 years and could be built within the existing ordinances, we are requesting that this request be denied. If you continue to keep allowing these variance requests, you need to be held accountable for ruining such a beautiful area. Homeowner located at 7313 with no name.
Well, I would just like to add one major thing that was the key point of every one of those letters, is the comment about the view on a canal. And what's already in the, it's already been decided that we've.
Correct. Yeah, I was gonna say, the view isn't the issue.
Right.
Let me close public comment.
Oh, sorry.
Any other public comment before I close public comment?
Can I, can I respond? Is it possible I don't know what the rules are?
Once we discuss if we have questions, then we can address you. Gary, I did have one question for you. And it may be a question for both of you. Says, "Eight-foot ceiling height on second floor is proposed." He mentioned something about a one-foot variance?
Well, per the State of Michigan code, what constitutes a second floor is a seven-foot ceiling height. That's the minimum requirement in the code to be called a floor. So, the way I've been treating it since I've been here is that anything under seven foot does not constitute a floor. So, you know, we have a number of builds that have been done at six-foot-10, six-foot-11. As long as it's under seven, then we don't call it a floor. Because they want an eight-foot ceiling, then that says it's a floor, which is disapproved or not allowed in that ordinance. But, you know, welcome to Colony Drive, right? Just for some clarification for you, Samantha, what the Colony Park Association does is they look at, any permits that are pulled for Colony Drive have to get approval from the park association. All they look for is if there's any deed restrictions. So, if there's no deed restricting that use or that, that build, then they sign off on it, then send it to us. It still has to meet our ordinances, and that's why they're here today. send it to us. It still has to meet our ordinances, and that's why they're here today, because all three of these points are ordinances that are disallowed by ordinance, but every ordinance, you have a right to appeal. So just wanted to clarify that that's the role of the association. And when I first came over, I'm going, "They approved it." No, they, they just realize that there's no deed restriction, that they don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions for Gary while I say?
Just one other thing, you know, Colony Park, you know, we've been permitting these things for a while now. The only thing that's, that I find different from all the others is that third boat bay. And I don't know, nothing has come before us for three boats anywhere. And I'm not sure of where there are any on that street, so I just wanted to add that.
All right, thank you.
I guess my first thought was the third boat request. I see absolutely no practical difficulty or hardship to need a third boat in a boathouse. That's how I look at it from a legal standpoint. We have allowed the second floors and the height. I think the difference with this one versus some of what we have approved in the past is that this is a hundred-foot frontage versus we've allowed people to go higher because they haven't had the width of the lot. So I'll leave it up to the rest of the board to discuss, but those are my thoughts.
When I was over there, the house is new, and it's right next to a little canal. And, you know, people are able to go under the bridge and go through there. And the road does have a little bit of a bend in it, so as far as slight obscurity, I don't think that would hurt anybody, you know, coming through there. It's a good project. The house, right when you turn right off of Colony Drive on the North Channel, it is just totally squashed. And it's too modest. And it's, oh my gosh. I can see why they want this lot and what they want. It really is a project.
And we discussed in the past, want, and we need practical difficulty in the situation, et cetera.
I think with respect to, like you said, with the third boathouse, I don't think that, that's not something that's not self-created. Third boat, it's a self-created situation. And it's a personal situation, so I think that that needs, uh, needs a proper...
On the height floor, the second floor, would this, sorry, would the second floor be over the boathouse portion?
What's the reason for the extra height?
Yeah, I know, I, I know. Did you, did you start, did you start at seven foot? Or did you start your design at seven inches one day because you thought you'd be...
Actually, maybe you could come up to my microphone, so...
I just wondered if you started at seven, or you didn't realize it?
I don't know. I, I, when I was putting the whole plan together, I was just trying to make roof lines and make things blend together so that it aesthetically looked right and tied in with the house across the street. And the way the roof line, we're trying to separate the look of the boathouse and the garage. And by doing it, we put an area in between it, which is the lower, and it just kind of tied the roof lines in. It just made it look more aesthetic. Did I give any thought to seven or six-foot-eleven or eight-foot? No, I really didn't, to be honest with you, but it just seems like it's, it's practical. You know what I'm saying? If I, if I had one, I would want it to be just a normal ceiling height. You know, on the water, you don't have storage. There's, there's very little storage, so anything that you can gain is a plus. The factor, though, if I, if I may, I don't know again if I can, the, the boathouse situation is very important. And it's important because of the fact that people spent a lot of money, and they paid for this particular lot because they have a situation where they have three boats, very expensive boats, that they've been paying storage on forever. This lot gave them an opportunity. We would have never went this far if we didn't already have existing three, there's four three boat well lots already there existing. So it's not like we're asking for a fourth well or anything. We just figured that since there were three or four of them already, it just seemed normal that we could ask for the same, the same thing.
Can I understand what you're saying, but also variances?
No, no, I, I understand, but that was the reasoning for buying that lot. I would have much rather had and bought a different lot because I owned it. Okay, so I would have rather had and buy, buy that one. But they didn't, okay, and that's fine. You know, the other problem that we have is we do have existing three, three boats right now, and we also have three boat wells that are already constructed. So I guess what I'm saying is, is because of the fact that we're just conforming with what's already there, I would really appreciate if you would give some thought to that through, because it just, it basically destroys the whole concept.
Did you come to the township and request for something in the form of...
Mm-hmm. We honestly didn't think it was a problem because of existing structures.
There's three wells now?
There's, there's three to four houses that have three, three...
We don't care about what other houses.
Okay, but I mean, we should...
You're only looking at this one as a unique situation.
The well, yes, to answer your question, yes, the well is already in. So it just basically destroys the whole concept that we did, all the planning, all the expense, everything is, is gone. And, and like I said, the reason that they want to be there is they have this situation, and they need to get three boats. I guess my, my question is, if you drive up and down the streets, look at the situation. There's people there that have three, four water craft. Would you rather have a, a water craft stored in out of sight, or would you rather have it just out in the middle of nowhere? You know, it's just another, it's like, it's like a garage that people don't have enough space for things, and they just stick everything on the outside.
That unfortunately is a planning issue, question, or is it...
Mm-hmm. Well, I'm just throwing...
Right.
I'm just trying to discuss it because out of all the variances we asked for, this is probably the most important one to us.
Wouldn't you agree that having three boats is more of a personal thing versus comparing it to, you know, the situation with the property, like the actual property?
Yeah.
Not, not really. If you go up and down, especially Colony Drive, because it is probably your, is probably the goal coast of Clay Township, to be honest with you. I'm a realtor and a developer, and there's nothing like Colony Drive anyplace. And there's people there that have four boats, five boats, two personal water craft. I mean, this is an unusual area and an unusual situation. For a person to have three vessels is not uncommon.
I'm not saying it's uncommon, but wouldn't you agree it's a personal choice to have those three vessels? And then, what about the property makes this request like, unique? Like, is the property super narrow? Is it shallow?
Well, it is...
The shape there?
Well, I think my point was it is very unique because in most situations there on that street, you could not get a third boat well. The lots are too narrow. This, this lot gives us the ability to do that. I would say if I had to take a guess, and don't hold me to it, 80% of the lots on Colony Drive are on the canal side are only 60 feet wide. It, it, they could vary a little bit, but 60 is a constant figure. This is 100.
So this essentially, what you're saying is because you have more room, you can do that, but it doesn't comply with the ordinance?
Uh, it does not comply with the accessory building ordinance, which, again, I've been in front of this board several times on Colony. I've designed most of these boathouses that are there. I've built most of them. The truth of it is, is, is that, um, I lost my train of thought. I'll be honest. I lost my... No, uh, the ability to have that third well does not hurt anybody on the street. They bought that lot because of the uniqueness and the possibility of being able to keep all of their boats inside. So, I mean, there is some, the real hardship would be is if you can't give it some leniency here and look at this as just a situation where there's boathouses down the street, for instance. There's only two, two boat wells, but they're wide boat wells. They could house four boats inside. We're just asking for three doors where we can put three doors, three boats inside of it. It's not like we're really asking for, I know it doesn't go along with the, these codes for accessory buildings, but I don't think a lot of things on Colony Drive do work with the accessory building ordinances because it's a separate parcel. It's...
Your third one is a smaller, right?
Pardon me?
The third boat well is smaller?
Very small. Well, not, I wouldn't say very small, but it is small, yes. So your consideration, this is just absolutely makes or breaks the whole project.
We'll discuss.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
I think with this one, we should probably take from that other time.
Just the, the normal course for Army Corps of Engineers and Eagle is that anything from a seawall out into the water is theirs. So they would have made application to Eagle before it came to us. Eagle did approve their plan, which doesn't mean a lot in my world because once it comes to me, then, once they submit to me, then we look at it from an ordinance standpoint. But prior to submitting any information to us, they got their approvals from Eagle and Army Corps. They put in three wells and a brand-new seawall, which they don't need to come to us to do that. It was only when they submitted for the building that they then were found to be not in compliance with that ordinance. So just to say, the, the wells are there. They didn't need to bring it to our attention prior to when they submitted for the plan. Okay?
Yeah, it's just basically covering...
Right. Here, the three boats versus two.
It's a hundred-foot lot. That, like I said, when we go down there, and we know because we have this issue, there are all fifty, sixty-foot lots.
Well, that's what I said. That's usually the basis for our grant...
Right. And that's probably why, but no, but that's two, is that no one else said this is the first one we've ever had a third boat well, but we've never had a lot that could sustain it.
I think...
So I, I wouldn't use that all week. We'd never care for us because every lot, it couldn't fit it, you know what I mean?
I think with this, I think my issue is just that it's, okay, it's a hundred-foot lot. All that that does is not necessarily allow a practical difficulty to comply with the ordinance.
Right.
You can just add another, like, you're able to do it because you have a hundred-foot lot, and you could potentially do it if you had a narrow lot, but there's no narrowness, there's nothing unique about the specific lot that would require...
I have a hard time getting it, Ken.
Yeah.
Let's look at the first one first. Boathouse exceeding 15 feet. Um, it's minimums that are to use, four-foot variance, 15 feet. Again, I have a little bit more to put behind it. It's not too much of a... Do you allow them to go taller?
It also...
Sorry.
Most of those places, they're new. It's typically, it's, it's, it's...
Red shoe, red shoe.
Right.
Well... Yes, um, so you're gonna have basically 10 feet on both sides of the, both of the building?
Side by side.
Yeah. Gary, can I ask you a question?
Do you have some support?
I need, need my stuff, right? Doesn't, uh, when you, uh, when you go over the, you know, the ordinance states as far as setbacks, it's three, five, or, you know, whatever it is I'm hearing for APD, doesn't, aren't, don't they gain any height on that because of setbacks are so far away?
They can, and that's, that's why I worded it the way that it was because officially, until this board decides, the only thing, and that's why I worded it, in if minimum setbacks are used. That's why I worded it that way, that, that variance would be required. If they're squeezed in off that side yard setbacks, minimum on this type of a build would be three feet. So that would allow them to go up higher, but the review hasn't been done until this board decides. And so with the, the side yard that they will have on the two-to-one ratio, they could gain the additional footage.
So they may not actually need a variance?
Depending upon the board's decision, you know.
Right? So like if you use 3.24, and you use the, um, that methodology, the height is not an issue at all.
And that's what I...
So the next thing would be, would be the height of the, inside the room, you know, that over the garage.
Like I said, let's work on the one at a time. But no, I would say, given the hundred-foot lot, and again, I can't make a motion today, um, and given what was just said as far as the setbacks, I would say that we would not be able to find a practical difficulty because it's not necessary, because they're able to have the setbacks necessary to exceed the 15 feet, like the request.
So I would make the motion that we, um, will approve the height on the basis of the, how the ordinance is also written as far as 3.24, as far as it's already met all the required setbacks and every time that, so if he has, as Gary had pointed out, he's exceeded the three foot, so he's already three foot six on one side, which gains basically gains another three on the other side, depending which way you want to move it.
So why would we grant it if he doesn't...
Well, you don't, it's not necessary, you know what I mean?
That's what I'm saying. It's not necessary. That's what I'm saying. There's no practical difficulty because it's not necessary.
So we can just say, it met all the requirements of the side setbacks, and using 3.24, it's not required. Can we just leave it there?
I would say that there's no practical difficulty because of the size of the lot. It will allow for the variance that's requested as stated without us granting it to the house.
Right.
So we're saying item one has to go back to the design, right?
No.
Well, we would deny it based on the fact that it's a hundred-foot lot, and that there's no practical difficulty in necessitating...
Clear.
...the variance for the additional height because it's allowed for in the ordinance, is my opinion.
Yeah, but it's not, you're not denying it.
No, we are denying. Well, I mean...
You know, you're just saying that it's not necessary, and, and it's just kind of a mute, you know, and you can't say...
We would have to deny it because he could come back to design and go with the three-foot, three-foot based on us granting those variances.
No, what he's trying to say is they've exceeded the, the, the minimum. They've exceeded it, not.
No, I understand.
So, if it's, if it's exceeded the, uh, the, the minimum required setbacks, and when you move it away from the property, every foot you move, you gain a foot.
Right.
Okay, so.
Hence, why we would deny that request, because with the hundred-foot lot, he doesn't need it.
Okay, well, that's what I'm trying to say, is you're saying deny, but it's also being that it's, it's okay as presented, is what has to be stated.
Well, but that hasn't been approved.
No.
So, if we don't deny the variance, then they can come back with a different design saying, we have a variance for this fifteen feet in height, so we're gonna change our design.
And make it wider.
And make it wider.
Yeah, 'cause most of them that come back, come to the board are sixty-foot, and we're talking a hundred-foot.
Right, and there's not enough room for the side variance.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a clarification question?
Mm-hmm.
So, three-point-zero-one, point-eight C, as the boat house is right now, it violates that ordinance, right?
Yeah.
As they have it designed right now.
Right.
It, I believe, does not.
Okay.
Because they have enough setback.
Okay.
But if we were to grant the variance.
Right.
They could come back with a different design.
They could make it wider.
Expanding, making it wider.
Because when you have a smaller lot.
And then they can go up.
Right, okay, yeah, so we wouldn't grant a variance.
So, it's, it's, it's gonna work out to their benefit as denying, is what she's trying to say.
Correct.
Okay.
So, I think, let's, my opinion is, let's make separate motions for each one, because they're all so different.
Yes.
And I do have extra sheets.
Gary wants to say something.
Yes, please. We made a ruling on that portion, uh, but just talking with the builder, he has fourteen feet at the back, but up at the front of the, the build, it's only gonna be nine. So, he's not gonna have the four-foot, um, or the eight plus three, eleven-foot required in order for him to go up the four feet that he's requesting. Because he's only at nine, and the two-to-one rule, it's not one-to-one, Dennis, the two-to-one, uh, to get four-foot height exception in three-point-two-four, or, or eighteen-point-zero-three right now, is that, that they need, um, four, two-foot for every foot they want to go up, that gives them eight, plus the required three-foot. So, he would have to have eleven, and he's saying he only has nine on the one side there. So, he would not be able to, to do it with, with that.
So, given that, would he still need a four-foot, or just a two-foot?
He, he could go to, you could allow for two-foot, and then that side yard, um, exception would allow him to get his four-foot.
Just what he just said, yes.
So, are you asking to approve or deny it?
Yeah, approve it.
Approve it based on what's the practical difficulty?
Again, you want to repeat what Gary just said? He said it eloquent. He said it eloquent, so.
Practical difficulty is. We're gonna grant it, just grant what is asked for, I guess, four-foot, based on the setbacks.
The practical difficulty would be.
He did say the lot was angled, so I guess we could say that there's practical difficulty in changing it.
Yeah, he has a fifteen-one, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I would say.
What Gary said, two-foot.
My opinion is, is just.
Say it, four-foot.
It's been noticed for four feet, so. So, are you making the motion now?
Yes, I did, yeah.
Are you going to finish?
I know, gosh, right? How do I even do all this stuff?
Because I can't make a motion tonight.
Well, again, that unique situation would be is because that, like, the, uh, how that particular corner of the right side of the lot, um, dips in, so they lose seven feet, the way the angle of that little canal going like through there. Um, not self-created, it's the fact that the canal was there, or built, well, Mr. Developer there, built that, put that canal through there.
Well, the canal existed, and the lot was planted from that way.
Well, when it was built, yeah, right. Substantial justice, and you can go up and down Colony, which is a very unique goldmine of a area here, it would not hinder any of the other moments, because they all have all the same kind of stuff going on. And it's not blocking anybody's view, you know. And, you know, the, it's not contradictory, because, you know, they, with the setbacks, going back to the setbacks, they've done everything they could to keep it, you know, in that, in that hundred-foot, so they, um, they could've choked it over one way over, you know, to the other side, and have less, more on one, but they centered in the property.
And if I could add maybe one more practical difficulty for you, is that it's already been approved by Army Corps.
I said that, too.
All right, do you want to, do roll call?
Deborah Addy, yes. Dennis Schneidsky.
Yes.
Joe Bosie.
Yes.
Samantha Bino.
Yes.
Bonnie McHale.
We'll open our time with this one, but I'll save yours. That was yours. So, the second one we are going to take up will be the boat house accommodating three boats.
I don't know if I can call this, but can I just add one thing to this, because this is important? Can I speak for my own?
Come to the right of the phone.
Thank you.
Sorry to keep coming up on this, but I think the concept is, is getting a little bit misunderstood. Um, on the Colony, in the past four or five years, I've built four boathouses down there that are bigger than what this boathouse is.
We understand.
Okay, but I have to just clarify one point. Three, out of those boathouses, if you took the main frame of the boathouse, they're all around forty feet deep, some of them are as much as almost fifty feet wide. But they have large boat wells with large garage doors, and they could easily accommodate four boats. We have a smaller boathouse, and all we've done is put a third door on it. It doesn't mean that we can put four boats in it, I guess what I'm saying is, is it's not the amount of doors, it's the size of the facility.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, I just, I just, because it seems like everybody is getting hooked up on the third door, and that really.
Not the third door, it's the third boat.
Oh, okay, well.
That's what violates the ordinance.
Okay, but I guess what I'm saying is, is the third boat, uh, how can you possibly police if a person puts four boats in?
That's up to Gary back there, and not up to us. Our, our only job is to follow these.
Okay, well, then, then let me back, let me retract then. We would like to present this with three boat wells, but we're only gonna store two boats in.
Well, there wouldn't be a thing then.
Well, let me ask, I mean, if the boats are the, if the boats are the problem, not the boat, amount of doors, then we're just gonna store two boats.
That is correct, Gary, right? There's no limit of the number of doors. They could technically.
This guy, three individual jobs.
Correct, but they could technically store two boats and a jet ski?
Um, it's still a watercraft, but.
Okay.
That is, would be a possibility. And, you know, it, it is, to, to make the point, I guess, to change his design and make one, three four, just the number of doors, then we can, the person can use four in there.
Right, again, that's not our job to police, that's the building department's job to police. Our job is to find the practical difficulty in dealing with the situation, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you.
And I guess, what it's worth, I still have a hard time finding a practical difficulty for me, the three boat.
You know, I, I don't know, I.
Again, the boat doors, we don't regulate, and it's not us, up to us to regulate how many boats are in the boathouse. So, I think in denying the ability to accommodate three boats, that becomes a building department issue.
So, the ordinance says, "Boathouses shall not exceed fifteen feet in height, except as provided below." Boat house shall not accommodate more than two boats unless located in a commercial or industrial district.
Correct, which this is not.
Right.
That's for marinas and such.
So, I think the fact that it does have three boat doors does mean it accommodates more than two boats.
But again, that's a design question for the building department, in my opinion. Our question is whether or not we allow three boats, and how we find a practical difficulty. I'm having a hard time finding.
So, if you have a garage, you can park three, four, five, six boats in your, in your garage.
The, it's not the ordinance we're dealing with.
No, I know, but you, at the same time, you know, uh, uh, the boat well, from like Gary said, um, is a, you know, from the, uh, seawell down, as approved through the state.
Right.
They don't care how many boat wells they have. The, if he changed it in one door and two-door, that's basically, from the look, he can, he can claim that it's two boat wells.
We're not being asked to address the doors.
No, I know, I know. The, uh, I don't know, opened a can of worms.
Let's go fishing.
I guess, like I said, if it were up to me, I would deny the three boats and leave that as an enforcement thing, and maybe that's something we need to take back to Planning Commission.
I was thinking the same thing.
Because.
It's kind of.
He's true, I mean.
We're a boating community.
We're a boating community, there's boats everywhere, there's jet skis everywhere, there's.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
I mean, I used to live on Anchor Bay Drive, I, I have two boats in my backyard right now, on B Lane, so, I mean, I get it.
Well, I know, I mean, I park six of mine, and if someone told me I could.
Then you'd become a marina.
That's right.
That's a whole separate issue.
I know. Well, someone make the motion then to.
Before you do, I'm the owner of the property, may I say something?
Um, sure, you have to come to the microphone and give your name and address, please.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. I know that what's in front of you right now, apparently, is pretty difficult.
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Ed Lambert, um, and don't know the street address yet, since we just moved into it, uh, on Colony Drive.
Eight-four-five-seven.
Eight-four-five-seven, thank you very much. I'll get it figured out eventually.
Second bridge.
Definitely, that's it, second bridge. Uh, the property's unique, as he said, it's a hundred-foot, that's what attracted us to it. We've been looking up and down here for the last six years. Uh, we love, we love it, it's going to be a, a, the house is a beautiful place.
The house is beautiful.
It's a, thank you. Uh, the boathouse is going to, uh, reflect on that, and the house itself, the boathouse itself, the size of it, is going to be smaller than any other of the newer boathouses that have been built there. It's just simply going to accommodate the third boat well.
We understand that.
A lot of the boathouses that are there accommodate three or four cars, so you see more of it from the road. The view for the folks across the waterway, or, or who use that waterway right there, are going to have a very attractive view, nothing that will take anything away from them. Um, if, if we don't put that there, then you'd see a lot of these boats on the outside, and so it would be less attractive than what it would be if they were housed inside. Um, whether we really put two or three there, we don't even know yet, just it's, it's nice to have that size property to be able to do this type of thing. Uh, so, that's kind of like our dream house, and that's what we're looking forward to. The, um, width of the property on both sides of it, it's significant, I mean, it's more than any other property on that street, so that's why we thought this was unique. We did not know that in 2020, that this ordinance was changed, we didn't know that. Uh, this was brand-new, we acquired this property the beginning of 2021, and that's what happened. Before 2020, there was no requirement that you could only have two, and we've been looking, and we made these, uh, started to make these offers in 2019, so I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, thank you. I guess, to me, this is one of those ones that I struggle with, because I understand the "I want" portion of it, I understand that there really is no harm in allowing it, but I don't see how we meet the criteria to allow it. If anybody else has any other opinion on that?
Yeah, the way the ordinance is written, I don't see anything that justifies the difficulty.
Right.
Yeah, I don't see, um, just the mere desire of wanting to have three boats have anything to do with the practical difficulty to comply with the ordinance, the, so, that's.
So, the wells are already there.
Again, that's an enforcement issue, not.
Right, so the wells are there, and then he wants to put a boat house on top of the wells, so we can't make him take a well away, because he's already been approved.
No, right.
We are just saying, we're not gonna approve a boathouse.
We're not gonna approve allowing a third boat.
Right.
Yep.
So, what he does after that is another subject.
Right, and beyond our pay grade.
I think I will make a motion to deny the, uh, boat house, um, the third boat house.
Third boat.
Third boat. Um, under the criteria that I believe it's a personal situation, um, there's nothing about the property that, uh, renders compliance with the ordinance, uh, difficult. Um, I think that it's self-created, um, owning another boat doesn't necessarily result, um, in a variance, scratch that. I think it's self-created because, you know, you're necessarily owning a boat, and, uh, that's self-created. Um, and it is, uh, I think that it would undermine the purpose and intent of those zoning ordinance.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Dennis.
Are you allowed to sustain?
Nope. You can only sustain if you have a personal interest.
Well, I, again, Eric, our, our hands are tied, and, um, and.
I'll second it.
Roll call?
Dennis.
Are you allowed to sustain?
Nope. You can only sustain if you have a personal interest.
Well, I, again, our hands are tied in how the ordinance states, so I would have to agree then to deny it.
Joe Bozzi?
Yes.
Yes to deny?
Yes to deny.
Was it yes, I put no, then, right? Yep.
Right.
Deborah Addy, no. Bonnie?
Uh, no. Yes to deny, or do you want to put a...
No, I'm a little confused.
I know, it gets confusing when we're denying them.
What you're saying is deny, then it's yes to deny, right?
Deb, did you vote yes to deny?
Yes.
You voted yes to deny it? Or no to deny it, you voted no?
See, that's the problem. I'm agreeing that...
Motion wasn't denied, so...
Yes to deny.
Yes to deny, thank you, yes.
I would just put yes to deny. I think it's easier that way.
More clear.
How are we going to do this on a...
I think we just say C attached and attach all of these.
And then have people sign this?
They can hope.
Because we've got yeses and we've got no's.
Right. I would say sign each one of these.
Okay.
All right. So let's make it through the third one real quick.
Okay.
The third one is the second floor not permitted. Eight point, or eight foot ceiling height on the second floor is proposed. In the past, I believe we've always allowed these as long as they're not over the boat wells themselves. So I guess I don't have a problem with this portion, as long as part of the motion is that it is not allowed over the actual boat wells, and that it's just over the garage portion or the storage portion of...
What would you be the practical difficulty?
Once again, I'd say probably the shape of the lot.
I think we could use the shape of the lot, and I think we could use the setbacks and the other issues that we discussed in the first one. Unless anyone has anything else.
Well, I would like to, but I'm terrible at reading this all back, so someone else...
Want to make another motion?
I could try. I'll make a motion to approve the variance request due to the unique shape of the lot. That would render compliance with the zoning ordinance, and would prevent the owner from using the site for permitted use. Unique situation. Is that, you know, this is Colony Drive, Colony Drive is a unique road, has a lot of unique circumstances.
Not self-created because it hasn't been built yet?
Not self-created because it hasn't been built yet. It would definitely grant property rights similar to those properties in the vicinity, since we've already granted those. So that would be substantial justice. And this is the minimum necessary variance request. It's minimum necessary to afford relief.
And that it can't go over the boat.
And it cannot go over the boathouse.
The boat wells.
Boat wells.
I'll second. Now, that wasn't that much better for her stumbling than me stumbling?
I don't think so.
Okay, and then, not over the boat wells.
Right. So I would say, yeah, just have everybody sign maybe at the bottom of each one.
Okay, that sounds good.
Just say yes or no.
Could do roll call on this one.
Yeah.
Dennis?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sam?
Is this on the second floor one?
Yes.
Yes.
Debbie, yes? Bonnie?
Yes.
Did we do the boathouse, the second variance?
Yeah, we did all...
We did all three. We denied the middle one.
The second one was the third boat.
Oh, I don't remember saying yes or no.
You initiated it.
I know that.
You did, plus you're going to sign in a minute.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to keep these with it too, just...
Do you want to look at these real quick?
Just send them all down.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to give these to you guys first.
All right. I think have it going to be some attached.
Thank you.
And I think what I'll ask Cindy to do next time is add signature lines to these.
Oh, that would be wise, if there's multiple, I think that's a great idea. Will she come back next week, Gary? Cindy? Will she be back Monday?
Start those down there. Do you want me just, on mine, just put on his...
Yes, I did.
Okay. There we go. I don't believe we have any unfinished business. Report of Planning Commission representative. Like I said, one thing that we might want to bring back is this number of boats thing.
Yes, I don't disagree.
I don't know why it was changed in 2020, but
I don't know, I guess they do something.
It's definitely something we need to look at, given we are a boating community.
The planners we had were like subdivision planners.
Right.
You know, Farmington Hills, no water.
I was going to say, other municipalities, like, you know, I worked in the boat camp for almost eight years. No boats in the front yard, I can understand, you know, no... There are certain rules and regulations, you don't want it to look like a junkyard.
Right.
But under certain circumstances, I don't see why we're limiting the number of boats. So anyway, I'll let you go on with your report.
I'm definitely going to bring that up. Okay, first, we had a company come in, Doggy Day Care. They had jumped through all the hoops they need to, their site plan was revised. They did everything the building department wanted to happen to them, for them. And so we had approved their plan, so they're going forward.
Where are they going to be located?
They are on Field Road.
Isn't that the same one that was there at Dog Channel Place years ago?
Long, long time ago, yep.
And we approved the fence thing.
Yeah. That's a good spot for it.
It really is. Okay, so zoning ordinance 126, there was a bunch of text amendments to it. These were approved. I did print one for everybody, but you can go on the township's website, under Planning, and you could see the 126 proposal that came in. I could read it to you, show it to you, what's read, and, you know, what didn't get changed. I didn't think I wanted to waste your time doing that.
It has not been approved by the board of trustees?
Not yet, it's gone to the board, though, it was sent to them. Then, we had Art Cook's plan come in. We gave him a variance in the back, forty, if you will, and so he brought his plan in, and we approved that with the variance.
Which one is that?
That is Art Cook on North Channel, seventeen thirty-seven North Channel on Harson's Island. He's going to add a building right there. Next, we had On the Rocks apply. They have a site plan approval, but we postponed the meeting, so they would have more time to post their advertising, so our planning commission got pushed back to August thirty-first. They want to be able to stay open later, and they want to be able to have outdoor music and fire to. I think it was, if I remember correctly, it was like ten o'clock. So that is coming up on August thirty-first. The next one was three four eight six Point Tremble. That is the mini storage behind Pryor's, over there by the light, by the Harson's Island ferry. They brought a site plan in, they were approved back in the day under a special land use. The owner came forward and said, "Well, there is an apartment there, and I would like to add a second one." So we tabled it, so he would seek ZBA approval, so that will probably be coming up for us.
Excellent.
And then, we were presented with some draft solar amendments, a draft solar ordinance, if you will, for solar, for businesses, for residences, and all those requirements. So it's in the discussion stage, and they want us to review it for our next meeting and see what we... I bet that was interesting, that that popped up. So that is pretty much it for that. And I know they had a park and recs plan, and it was reviewed, and it looked pretty good, and we got a lot of responses for it.
Oh, good.
And I think that's probably going to the board as well at some point. I looked at their agenda, and I didn't see, but I'm not really sure how that works, but I think we'll send it to them next.
All right. Any public comments? See, no public. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?